Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 3rd, 2009 meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. And tonight's flag salute will be led by City Councilmember Weaver.
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. President Lyndon B. Johnson, in his special message to the Congress on the nation's cities on March 2nd, 1965 authored the following: "The American city should be a collection of communities where every member has the right to belong; it should be a place where every man feels safe on his streets and in the house of his friends; it should be a place where each individual's dignity and self-respect is strengthened by the respect and affection of his neighbors; it should be a place where each of us can find the satisfaction and warmth which comes from being a member of the community of man; this is what man sought at the dawn of civilization; it is what we seek today." End quote. Tonight, we meet in these chambers of our city government to give meaning to these words through our actions. We pray that our decisions are made with wisdom and blessed with foresight for the betterment of the quality of life of all of our city's stakeholders. Amen.
Mr. Kasakian, could we hear your report, please?
Certainly. The agenda for the February 3rd, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was supposed to on January 29th, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And I'd like to take just a moment. We're going to step out of sequence here, ladies and gentlemen, as we get to item three, which is Presentations and Appointments. But I'd like to take a moment and I'm gonna ask my colleagues to help me with this in just a moment. We celebrated, here in the city of Glendale, we celebrate many things historic, and I'm sure I'm confusing the camera people downstairs, since I'm mobile. But we had a special birthday, and I will tell you that I was on my way to your birthday. And I'm speaking, of course, with...
I'm very happy to be here and blessed with all you wonderful men who guide and take care of our country.
And, of course, you are Florence Tuckman, correct? And you just celebrated what birthday?
A hundred and six.
A hundred and six years old. I have news for you, ladies and gentlemen. You're just a little older than the city of Glendale, by the way. And I might point out that, unless I'm mistaken, your neighbor here, Viola Barton, is about to celebrate in March. What number birthday?
My birthday, March 11th.
And how old will you be?
Well, I was born in 1902.
So let's see. That would make the math. You'd be 107 years old. Do you realize between the two of you, you're more than twice the age of our city? And I understand you play a mean piano.
I'm sorry, but I don't hear.
You play the piano, I understand.
Yes, I do.
And...
For a silent movie.
Really? Really? And I understand, Ms. Tuckman, that you have, play a mean hand of poker as well. Is that right?
I enjoy it.
Well, I was on my way down to Ms. Tuckman's birthday party the other day, and as some of you may have heard, I was in a fender bender on the way and didn't make the party. However, I should tell you that I was in a fender bender with the pastor of a church up in La Crisena, and he explained to me that this is the reason for the separation between church and state, he said. And that's true. That's what he said. Anyway, I'd like to ask my colleagues if they'd come down and join us here. They have a few things for you. And Councilmembers Najarian and Councilmembers Yusefian have a presentation for each of you, and Councilmember Weaver and Councilmember Quintero have a little gift for you from the city.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Florence, I did make it to your birthday and brought you some flowers, but in the midst of the TV and all of your granddaughters and your daughter and all the people who were there, you, they had a great time. By the way, there was a picture of Florence with all of her daughters and granddaughters. I mean, it's four generation. And she has a great-granddaughter who has the same exact birthday. So I told her that she's got the right number, so we expect her to see her about 106 years from there. Anyway, Florence, here is a mayor's commendation by John Drayman that says, "In honor of your 106 years of living a healthy and productive life, my colleagues join with me to applauding you for being a magnificent role model and inspiration to the entire community, wishing you nothing but royal flushes in every poker game you play." And I must say, there were many other individuals in that room, and almost everyone says that she's a card shark. So just tell us, what was your secret that you said it wasn't a secret?
Well, my secret isn't a secret. Just be happy.
That was it?
Friends.
And Viola Barton, this is for you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Viola Barton, this is for you. In honor of your 107 years of living a healthy and productive life, my colleagues, the entire city, joins with us in applauding you for being a magnificent role model and an inspiration to the entire community, and we wish you many more years of piano-playing enjoyment. Now, can you tell us what your secret is for living 107?
I just really don't have a secret. You just live the way you want to, in a good way, and take things as they come and do as best you can. I just don't have a secret.
Well, thank you. Congratulations. This is for you.
I also want to congratulate you both, and I've been looking at your gifts. They're actually gonna be quite nice. I think you're gonna enjoy them very much. Also want to thank the staff for the good work that they do. This is a longtime friend of mine, one of the directors. And then let me say that when Mr. Weaver and I are 100 years old, we're both gonna be here together to receive the city council's proclamation.
Speak for yourself. I'll be, I'll be long gone, Frank. I got a few years on ya. And here's a gift for you two. And this is the first year I think I've missed on your birthdays, or how many? I've been to about five, six, seven of them, you know? So I plan to see you again next year, and I can, I can imagine the reason you've lived this long in Glendale is the good clean air, right? And the good water. Congratulations, and I'll see you two next year, okay?
Thank you very, very much.
All right, well, one last thing, gentlemen. Well, you'll sit out then. We have to sing "Happy Birthday" to these ladies before we... If it's the last thing that this fivesome ever does, all right? Ready? Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Florence and Viola. Happy birthday to you.
And many, many more. And to the director, you have to sometime explain to us what's in the water down at Elm's Convalescent because...
It's working.
Anyway, we thank you so much for joining us, and we'll, as Mr. Weaver said, we'll see you next year.
Thank you. We're blessed with your presence, and we enjoy every day we're near you or with you or hear of you, and we're with you and happy for you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
It's down there at their 100th. Now, six years, nine years. Watch it again.
Well, if you keep that up, Mr. Weaver, if you keep that up, Mr. Weaver, you'll live a long time, so. All right. Mr. Kasakian, could you take us back to item number three?
Three, under Presentation and Appointments, at 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of February 10th, 2009.
All right. With that, let's go to Bob McFall, our Assistant City Manager.
Thank you very much. That is very tough to top, though. That's pretty remarkable. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, there's no specific Housing Authority items. Redevelopment Agency does have one business item, and that'll be a report from the Director of Development Services on a professional services agreement, a change order, this being for, connected with the management, management of the Brand Boulevard Farmers' Market, and that being actually for the School of Self-Reliance, who manages the Farmers' Market. At 2:30, there is a special meeting of the Glendale City Council, and this will be for the Director of Parks and Recreation to present a report that will be the proposed Pacific Pool Development Work at Pacific Park. And this will include a preliminary location plan and requesting council to provide direction to staff regarding location of the pool. The city council meeting that evening, the 10th, at 6 o'clock, there are a number of items. The first, the city treasurer will be presenting his quarterly investment review, and this being investments as of December 31st. Next, the Director of Planning will be presenting a report regarding initiating either zoning or establishing a special setback ordinance along and adjacent to Hollister Terrace. Next, the police chief will be submitting a report on the installation of electronic equipment and police vehicles, police department vehicles. And then lastly, there'll be a hearing. The Director of Planning will be submitting a report on the proposed ordinance to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, this relating to various landscape requirements.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Kasakian, what's our next item?
At 3B is nomination assignment for Historic Preservation Commission. This nomination assignment is from Councilmember Najarian. At 3C is nomination assignment for Building and Fire Board of Appeals. Nomination is Mr. Quintero's, Councilmember Quintero's.
Okay. I might mention Mr. Quintero. I also have a nomination for the Building and Fire Board that is pending. I don't think we have any applications. So again, I would encourage anyone who is interested to please contact the City Clerk's office. All right. Next item, please.
Next item is City Council and Staff Comments.
Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero.
I would like to read a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation. For the 25th year, Glendale has been named Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. And Glendale has met the four standards to become a Tree City USA community. It has a tree border department, a tree ordinance, tree care ordinance, a comprehensive community forestry program, and an annual Arbor Day observation and proclamation. The letter then goes on to say that trees promote healthier communities, that leaves filter the air we breathe by removing dust and other particles, trees moderate climate, they conserve water, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees in urban areas also reduce the heat island effect caused by pavement and buildings, and properly placed trees can increase property values. So 25 years, it shows that Glendale has been a green community, and we have to continue to make it that way.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Najarian.
I have nothing.
Mr. Yusefian.
And building on the Tree City USA, March is coming around, and it's time for us for Arbor Day. And if you would like to donate a tree through Glendale Beautiful, you can call Arcs and Recreation at 548-2000. It is a very inexpensive way to do something, to remember somebody by, or instead of giving roses for Valentine's Day, which will cost you probably $90 a bouquet, you could plant two or three trees for that particular loved ones that can go back and visit. And you can even call out the type of trees you want. So if you want to plant a tree in the city of Glendale and make this city even beautiful than it already is, call 548-2000 and get in touch with Glendale Beautiful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. I have a couple of announcements. One is just a comment. I've received a communication from Pamela Tom up in Chevy Chase related to the Chevy Chase Library. And I'd like to ask if we can, Mr. City Manager, please, see if we can facilitate some quick responses to their desire. As you recall, during the last round of budget study, there was a question about hours and of Chevy Chase Library. We had rounded several meetings with the residents there. Pamela Tom was one of them. And we had asked them to come up with some volunteer measures from the residents there in the community to help keep the library open and programs to increase the participation there. And they do have a program they have put together for that purpose. But I think there are perhaps some mixed signals coming now, so if we could do some special hand-holding and find out what it is their program is meant to be and whether or not that fits into our current budget scheme and so on.
Do you have a letter?
I do have a letter, and I know that Cindy Cleary, our Director of Libraries, was copied on it.
Okay.
But I want to make sure that there is...
That's fine. I'll follow up.
Thank you very much. Secondly, I would like to read to you a little bit about the passing of Ivan, as most people know him, Bud Homo. And so let me read that to you now. Ivan Homo, perhaps the most well-known barber in Glendale, passed away on Monday evening, January 26th, with his family at his side at Solheim Lutheran Home after a long battle with Alzheimer's disease. Ivan was born on September 7th, 1922, in Coleman, South Dakota, to Olaf and Ida Sunt Homo, and was the third of six children. His father passed away when he was six years old, leaving him as the oldest boy to take care of his pregnant mother, two older sisters, and two younger brothers. He worked on the family and neighboring farms while attending school and graduated from Sioux Falls High School, where he participated in football, basketball, and track. With the war just beginning, Ivan moved to Glendale, where he worked at Lockheed building airplanes. He attended Salem Lutheran College. He eventually joined the Navy and served as a radar operator on a PBY in the Solomon Islands, and then at, at the Naval Air Station at Kenea Bay. It was there that he was given the opportunity to learn to be a barber. He returned to Los Alamos Naval Air Station in Long Beach, but still managed to attend Salem Lutheran Church, which is where he met his future wife, Esther Wenstrom. They were married in June 14th, 1946. Ivan attended barber school and did his apprenticeship in Hollywood, and in May 1948, opened Ivan's barber shop at the corner of Glen Oaks and Grandview. And it was there that he became known as Ivan's, he became known as Ivan the Terrible King of the Flat Tops. He worked at the same shop until 2004, so from 1948 until 2004, cutting the hair of generations of Glendaleans. Some of his customers traveled from Orange County and Ventura County every two weeks to have their hair cut, and for many years, he cut the hair of the entire football teams on the first day of Hell Week at both Hoover High and Crisina Valley High. Ivan and Esther had three children, Bonnie, Steve, and Tom, who grew up both in Glendale and La Crisena. Ivan was a devout Christian, sang in the choir, served as a deacon, visited the, confined and served as a board member at Salem Lutheran Church and Lutheran Church in the foothills. He was an avid sports fan and could be seen in the stands at both Hoover and Crisina Valley High School games, long after his sons, Steve and Tom, had graduated. He and Esther had the opportunity to attend four Super Bowl games to cheer for Tom and for the 49ers. Ivan was a prolific gardener, providing fruit and veggies not only for his family but half the block on Teasley Street in La Crisena. His home and his table were open to anyone, anytime. Esther predeceased him in 2001, as did his sister Irene, and he is survived by his children, Bonnie, Neil Hayes, Bonnie and her husband Neil Hayes, Steve and Tom, Homo and Tom's wife Lori, grandchildren Shannon, Danny, Eric, and Lauren, and his older sister Vi, and brothers Orv, Robert, and Ole. The family will be forever grateful to the nurses and staff of Solheim Lutheran Home for their kind and loving care of Ivan over the past years. I would just like to say that this is a longtime family in our community that raised a second generation of children in this family that were given to high academic achievement and great service to our community. And Bud will be missed, and I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory. And I thank you for that. And with that, Mr. City Clerk, you can move on to the next item.
Next item is Consent Items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
I have no cards to pull items, Mr....
Move the items. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Mr. Kasakian, if you would.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero. Yes. Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is Oral Communication, as listed on the agenda.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we take oral communications at the end of the agendized items, with the exception of those speakers who volunteer to limit their time to three minutes for the purpose of making public announcements. Our first speaker is Pauline Field, followed by Arno Uretzian from Abrel Bookstore. Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. It's been quite a while since I've been here. It's good to see you all. The reason I'm here is to announce an event coming up this Saturday at the Pacific Community Center. It's put on by a nonprofit I'm involved with called 50/50 Leadership, which promotes women's equal leadership. It's called Love Yourself. Given that Valentine's Day is coming up on the 14th, we figured that it would be nice to take care of ourselves also. And so that's what this event is about. There's going to be speakers on how to be financially fit, on self-defense, on taking care of your skin, particularly preventing skin cancer, and on Feng Shui, how to make your home and your office, your living space, one that works for you. There will be a clothing drive. We have an organization we're collaborating with called Urban Possibilities that works with the homeless and for the, for the women who they serve, that they try and get them jobs, and they need clothes to wear. So we're looking for people to bring their gently-used professional clothes. They will be there to accept them. We'll have live music, dog prizes, refreshments, and some American tribal belly dancing. So lots of good stuff happening in the afternoon. We're expecting a full house. Admission is entirely free. It's open to the public. And so maybe some of you will join us, maybe, you know, wives, daughters.
Men are allowed.
Men are allowed. Absolutely. So thank you very much and hope to see you there.
Very good. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Arno Uretzian from Abrel Bookstore. I'll say welcome back to you, too. We haven't seen you in a while.
Thank you. Good to be here. Dear Mayor, dear City Councilmembers and City of Glendale, I'm Arno Uretzian. From the, I'm here on behalf of Abrel Bookstore, the local Armenian bookstore down the street from here. And this doesn't usually happen, but we're having two events back-to-back this week, and that's why I'm here, to announce it and invite all of you. The first one will be on Thursday, February 5th, at 8:00 PM at our bookstore, which is located on 415 East Broadway. This event will be in English. Sorry, I wanted to take a fast... We'll have with us Ruth Bedevian, all the way from Pennsylvania. She's the editor of My Odyssey, a new book about the life of Antonina Mahari. She's a Lithuanian woman who, probably the same generation of Mrs. Burton, Burton and Tupman, who were just here, maybe a decade younger. But she lived in a very different world than them in the Soviet Union under the very repressive regime there. She was exiled to Siberia when she, in her, when she was in college, where she met and eventually became married to the famous Armenian author Kurken Mahari. And she just, she's had a very interesting, incredible life, living under that regime where they were always under surveillance, on the threat of being exiled. So this one's, this Thursday at our bookstore. The second one we're hosting is going to be Friday, February 6th. However, it's gonna be at the Glendale Central Library Auditorium, where we're having with us the famous Armenian conductor Sebu Apkarian. He especially has his role for conducting the Gohar Armenian Orchestra and Choir, who was in town last year. We're basically gonna show excerpts from the concerts, a few of the concerts, and then we're gonna have him up there for a question and answer, and he's also in his 80s. But this one is, will be in Armenian, the one on Friday, will be in Armenian. So two events, Thursday at our bookstore, Friday at the library, and all welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That is our last speaker card for this portion of oral communications. Let's move on to the next item.
Under Adoption of Ordinances at 7:00. At 7A is an ordinance amending the zoning map to reflect a new zoning designation related to the Cottage Grove Historic District Overlay Zone. This was offered on January 27, 2009 by Councilmember Yusefian.
All right.
Move the item, Mr. Mayor. Second.
We have a motion and a second. I have no speaker cards on this item. Is there any further comment from the council? Hear none? Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. And the item at 7B?
7B is an ordinance amending the zoning map to reflect a new zoning designation related to the Ardavine Highlands Historic District Overlay Zone, offered on January 27, 2009 by Councilmember Najarian.
Mr. Najarian.
I'll move 7B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And again, I have no speaker cards. Is there any comment from City Council? I hear none, so Mr. Kasakian, back to you.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. And congratulations to the residents of both of those brand-new historic districts in our city. All right. Our next item, please.
At 8 is Action Items, and at 8A is City Manager Regarding Consideration of Federal Appropriation Request for Fiscal Year 2010. At 8A1 is a motion approving and authorizing staff to submit proposed projects for possible federal appropriations for fiscal year 2010.
All right. Very good. Let me go to Mr. Tuktalian.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Drayman, members of council. During the City Council meeting of January 27th, the City Council was presented with a list of programs and projects and asked to prioritize them for submission to our federal representatives for possible federal funding. At this time, staff asks that the City Council review the submitted projects and programs and provide their priority for each. Staff will then calculate each of the project's values and provide, based on each member's preference, and tally them up. We have members of staff from individual departments who submitted projects, if there's any questions from the City Council.
Let's see if there are. First of all, I have no speaker cards on this item, so let me start on this end. Mr. Weaver.
Comments? I just want to know how we're gonna do this.
All right. Then let me move on and see if there are any other comments before we talk about procedure. Mr....
No.
Mr. Yusefian, anything about comments before we get to procedure here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
My agenda does not have 8A on it, and my packet doesn't have anything on 8A.
Yeah, it was on our desk on Friday.
Anyway. Anyway.
Well, I guess I should utter the word surprise.
But I had read it last week, so.
All right, we need to talk about procedure. We have a list of items in need of some prioritizing. I am open to discussion. As to the best way to do that, since we have five council members, I don't want to put them in a hat and pick them. So why don't we start, again, on my left with Mr. Weaver. Why don't you-- and if someone can please keep track of our box scores here, Mr. Weaver.
Just run them down, and then you can compare.
Yes, and then we'll compare, see where the overlap is, and then we can have discussion on those. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if you will, just a brief bit of input, and it only relates to one of the items, and that is the ISIS Microwave Loop Protection System that's in here. In speaking with Don Wright, who is now executive director of ISIS, we're coordinating among the various ISIS cities for a request to Washington, those other cities in ISIS to coordinate with us, that this gets a relatively high ranking. We think we can get funding for this, but it's going to take all the cities coordinating. So Mr. Wright's comment to me was, is this one in particular should be among the top three, so we can be consistent with other communities. Doesn't have to be number one, but hopefully number two or number three, if not number one--
It is.
--in terms of priority, and I think your staff would agree with that. So that one in particular, we'd hope, would get up there among the top three.
Then I'll just read my numbers down.
Let's do this. Let's have each of the council go through their prioritized items and then--
Okay, I'll just read my ranking number.
All right.
And obviously discuss it. I'll just say the numbers, two, five, six, eleven, eight, ten, seven, three, ISIS is three, four, one, nine.
For anybody that's just tuning in--
Thank you.
This must sound very strange.
Just so I'm clear--
Yes.
Rank them by order.
For instance, number two is the beeline maintenance facility?
Is the high rail crossing.
Oh, I'm--
Two, five, six. Beeline, I put maintenance at number five. Within transportation, it would be number two, but we're told to do the overall--
Mr. Weaver, I think you're working off a different page than Mr. Yusefian.
Summary appropriations request page, one we were handed out.
Well, number two is the beeline maintenance facility.
What? No.
Let me just look over your shoulder for you.
Just saying.
He's leaving it in the item, in the order written on the page, but he's adding his priority--
Right down.
He's assigning a number next to each as you go down.
Okay. And the category would be number two.
All right. Mr. Montero?
Well, I'll approach a little bit different. I'll name it. Number one for me is the smart grid infrastructure for Glendale Water and Power. Number two would be the Parks and Rec Glendale Regional Soccer Baseball Complex. Number three would be the compressed natural gas buses, although in view of what Mr. Starbird mentioned about ISIS, actually, I guess I can make that number three, and the CNG buses number four. Then number five would be the Fifth Armored Division Heavy Lift Aircraft, a regional disaster. They're going heavy, heavy aircraft now. And is that enough, or we keep going?
What number are we?
I keep going. You're at number five.
You're at five, I think, yeah.
Then number six would be the Regional Aquatic Center, not to be confused with the Pacific Park Pool, which, different story. Seven would be Maintenance Facility. Eight, Crime Intervention Video. Nine, Regional-- Verdugo Regional Training. And ten, Adgrave Rail Crossing.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of--
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
--Tuktalian?
Of course.
The Aquatic Center, according to the report, it is Pacific Edison. Is that correct?
Uh, council member--
As I said, it's not an aquatic center.
It is correct. We're referring to the same project.
So you're talking about Pacific Pool--
You're calling it an aquatic center, which it is not.
You're calling it an aquatic center, but you're talking about money for Pacific Pool.
Correct.
Okay, well, in that case, thank you for clearing that up. I would say I would want that to be number four on the list.
Then what do you--
But let's be clear. Glendale Water and Power would be first. Second would be the Regional Soccer. Third would be the ICIS, and fourth would be the Aquatic Center. Then everything else can slide down a number.
All right. All right, Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. I just want to briefly preface my remarks, and I understand that our senators and Congressman Schiff would like some sort of numerical prioritization, but when you're actually there in Washington, these numbers are almost-- they evaporate into thin air if the congressman shows an interest in number ten, let's say, on your list. You sell number ten the best you can, because that's where you get the indication that you'll get some funding. But I'll go through with this ranking system. Number one, I'll pick the Glendale Regional Aquatic Center. Number two is the beeline maintenance facility. Number three is the ISIS project. Number four is the Soccer Baseball Complex. Number five is the CNG beeline buses. Number six is the Adgrave Highway Rail Crossing Improvements. Am I going too fast? Okay. Seven is the Smart Grid Automated Metering Infrastructure. Eight is the Heavy Lift Aircraft. Nine is the Verdugo Regional Training Center. Ten is the Crime Intervention Video Project. Did I miss anything? That leaves the barn.
And I'm sorry, number ten you had was what?
Ten was the Crime Intervention Video Project.
Okay, and eleven was the--
The Messager--
Okay.
--Regional Interpretative Center.
Okay, the barn at Duke Majin Park. Okay. Mr. Yusefian?
I'm just going to pick three. The rest, you guys can decide whatever is fine with me. Number one, ISIS. Number two, at rail crossing. Number three is the-- is the facility, compressed natural gas facility.
What would be your fourth? You had a fourth.
Whatever you guys want to do, doesn't matter. Because I agree with Ara, actually. It's whatever they like, that's what becomes a priority. So you walk in there, and you want ISIS number one, and the guy wants to talk about a pool? Man, it's all about the pool at that moment, because anything else you talk about, it goes through one ear and comes out the other. It makes no difference to him.
All right, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I know, same thing, but I called David Church in Washington following the time he was here a couple days ago, and I explained, you really want us to prioritize these one to eleven? When it's just what Mr. Najarian and Mr. Yusefian said, and he insists, that's what he wanted. So I said, okay, three of us disagree with that approach, but that's what Mr. Church wants.
Four. We'll do it.
Okay, four.
All right. All right. I'll read my numbers in the manner that Mr. Weaver did, so as not to just keep repeating--
It's almost like a bingo, Dave.
It sounds like bingo. It sounds like we're calling bingo, doesn't it? I would start with number three. Number five, Mr. Yusefian, that was mean, because now I can't get that image out of my head. Number three, excuse me, number two. Number five, number six, number eleven, number eight, number ten, number seven, number four, number one, and number nine, bingo. All right.
Would you thought about that?
That's all right.
Would you read those one more time, Mr. Mayor? I got--
Three, two, five, six, eleven, eight, ten, seven, four, one, nine.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor? Direction or what?
I have to tally it up.
Well, now we need--
Yes.
Well, we'll leave the tally to you, but let you--
You may only lead two on one item.
Well, ISIS is in the top three.
Well, we know ISIS will be in the top three, because that's common to every one of the lists.
Three of us had ISIS as number three.
I think we are looking for those that have--
They're all over the map.
Compile it. Compile it.
We better let staff figure this one out.
All right. Let me do this. Let me do this. Mr. City Manager, while you all are acting like Price Waterhouse and tabulating our numbers and bringing us something else, and staff, now I see all the staff is busy on this. You might as well dig in, Mr. Elliott.
He's the only CPA in the group, and he's not adding up numbers.
I'm going to go, Mr. Kasakian, I'm going to go on to, if I may, I'm going to go on to oral communications, and we'll come back to our bingo game at the end.
Staff wants to recess to the back room.
All right. Mr. Kasakian, could we read the item for oral communications at this point?
Sure. Item six is oral communication discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker. There will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay, thank you. Our first speaker is Tamara Mufsesian, followed by Cedric Amirian.
He's. 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 He's.
Thank you very much.
I asked her to sit down. I have some questions from her afterwards.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Appreciate that. All right. Our next speaker is Cedric Amirian, followed by Zamrad Agakanyan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gentleman has some housing issues. Maybe John can meet with the gentleman outside and take some of the information and deal with it.
All right. Thank you, and thank you again, Mr. Yusefian. Our next speaker is Zamrad Agakanyan. Agakanyan.
Yeah, she doesn't need to speak.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Then our next speaker is Barry Allen, followed by Al Hoffman.
I'm Barry Allen with Vanguardians, and of course, the council staff, and of course, the public. I want to thank the council for allowing Vanguardians to put forth our utility users tax on telecommunications against. And I want you to know it was delightful working with about forty people and eighty iterations of our document. I also want to, yeah, it's, you know, the camels were designed by committees too. But our committee really, really did quite a great job on it. I also want to ask the council if that forty thousand dollars that you have voted yourselves to promote the utility users tax, if you would share some of that with us. We certainly would like to use it to let the people know, the public know, the voters, what really is on the other side besides what they'll see in the ballot measure. I also want to mention that we had campaign finance reform. We voted on it back in, I guess, August, and it took effect, and we're seeing that thousand dollars with the cutoffs, with the exception of the fact that council members Quintero and Ngerian were more than happy to accept all of that money from the various city unions in August of last year, and then in September voted on issues that were before the city council on benefits and other things that were going to one of those groups. But I would imagine that the city attorney may need to look into that because of the amount of money, which was more than a thousand dollars. In fact, in fact, Mr. Ngerian got about fifteen thousand, and Mr. Quintero only got about eleven-five from the various city unions. And I think we need to look into that to see if there are any violations of at least the spirit of the law. Now, we've also heard some talk about the city would like to set up a community calendar. I think it's a great idea, and we've already put that on our website, and people can enter in their information. It can be maintained, a community calendar for any of the nonprofit city events and things like that. It's on our Vanguardians.org website. And along with that, I would really like to take a minute or so to thank some of the volunteers that are helping the city of Glendale. We have Victor Rout. Victor is a fourteen-year-old young man in New Orleans, and he is working with Diana Ringer, who is our webmaster in Modesto. And Victor has been so excited about reading old Vanguard's as he's been loading them onto the website, that next year, when he has a civics and government program, he's going to ask his teacher to get them to the New Orleans City Council that Victor already watches online. I think it's great. And we also have the Adam Beck family in Florida, who's been doing some of our, adding audio and animation to our PowerPoint presentations that we'll be able to take out and we'll be able to also use on our website. And for those civic organizations, we will have, provide speakers on the utility users tax telecommunications. It'll be on the April ballot. Just call us, and we can set somebody up to come speak at your civic gatherings so that people can be better informed when they go to the polling places. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen. Al Hoffman, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mayor Draymond, councilmen, staff, Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. This morning at the budget meeting, the safety issue really rose to the top. Everybody was really concerned about any budget cuts to anything that would harm our safety or diminish our safety. And one of the things that is really unsafe in this town is speeding. It's just unbelievable. I mean, Glen Oaks and Kenyatta Boulevard and Verdugo Road and San Fernando are the kingpins, but it happens everywhere. Speeding, people not even heating. They come out and make right turns against a red light and don't even look. They just come right out in front of you. But the speeding is just absolutely incredible. Now, I was a teenager here. We had our fun, but we had forty-nine Chevys and things like that. You could maybe go eighty-five miles an hour at top speed. But we did put straight pipes on to make noise to give us the feeling we were really going fast. But that's the only ticket I ever got was for excessive noise coming home from Glendale College at night after band practice. But the issue that comes to mind is, a few years ago, we raised all the speed limits in the city based on some kind of a rule that the average speed was higher. And it seemed to me that, well, everybody's going so fast, lighting speeds, well, we better raise it. So they raised it, and that just means everybody goes, whatever you raise it, that much faster. And I really think it's important that we go back to that lower rates that we had on Glen Oaks and Sonora. And, I mean, it's, we have an apartment building on Sonora, and every once in a while, a motorcycle cop is out there, and he's constantly on the go getting people with his radar. And if it's too bad we don't have radars all over. And that brings to mind that in nineteen eighty-five, I was in Germany. I rented an Avis car, and I got a ticket in the mail from Avis while they fined me. And they already paid it, but they really zapped me converting it from marks at the time to dollars. And it turns out I was caught in a city speeding, and they took a picture of the license plate with a radar. And wow, you know, you think of Germany, you can drive with no limits, but in towns they have limits, and they enforce them. And I don't know if we have that capability. It's got to be available, but boy, that would really do it. If you had these radar things and people getting their pictures snapped with their license plate, that'd be one way to control speed. But we really need to do something, and I think we ought to relook into reducing the speeds on Glen Oaks. It's a residential area. I see people on Kenyatta Boulevard trying to get out of the driveway in the morning. Oh, my God. It's like trying to back out onto the two freeway. It's really a disaster, and they just, we don't have enough police officers to enforce all those places. So hopefully, we can revisit that whole deal and lower our speeds again in Glendale. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
Well, I did want to mention one thing, if I could. I don't know, Dick Murray, if all of you know, he does have lung cancer. Dick is, I call him Mr. Hillside Ordinance. He's been down here. He's probably the leading guy that I can think of, is pushing for hillside ordinances, and every time there's a violation of it, he's here. So hopefully, we can all put him in our prayers. I hear he's doing fairly well at the Norris Cancer Center at USC, going to get chemotherapy there and radiation, I guess. You're optimistic that things are going to go well for him. So keep them all in your prayers and thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Margaret Hammond, followed by Theodore Polikronis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff and audience and TV audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and, as I say, a fifty-year resident of Adams Hail. Tonight, I'd like to make an announcement. Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council will be presenting a candidate's forum on February the eighteenth at seven o'clock at the Glendale Central Library. There is free parking and refreshments. All candidates are invited to be involved in this forum. The public is invited to come and ask questions and et cetera. Your chance, and it is your chance, to find out how the candidates will address your concerns, should they be elected. And you can ask these questions via written cards, which will be presented to the candidates. I would like to add one more thing, and many of you know Lila and Richard Ramirez. Their daughter passed very suddenly in the night on Sunday. She was only forty-seven. They're a wonderful family. They had five daughters, and this girl, Judy, was the middle daughter. Wonderful lady, did volunteer hospice work all over the city and was a very kind, generous person, that she did tremendous amount of work. And of course, it's terrible when your children go before you. I mean, it's enough. My dear friend Dory, that passed last week, was eighty-five. But, you know, when we get up there, I mean, we're not immortal. So we know that that's going to happen, but it's hard to lose our children. And I want you to keep them in your prayers. They need that right now. Richard, of course, served on the planning commission, and they've been wonderful. Lila's volunteered thousands of hours in different groups in the city. Wonderful woman, wonderful lady. You know, talking about that, I think some of us are going to be pretty fortunate if we live to be past the age we are right now. For instance, I was coming here this evening, and I stopped at the corner of Chevy Chase and Adams. Somebody, and the light turned green, and it had the white signal that you could walk. And a lady started off from the curb beside me to cross. Somebody came south on Adams, and virtually, the woman was not even to the middle of, almost to the middle of Chevy Chase, which is a wide street there. I thought he was going to hit her. I mean, I held my breath. I mean, I was like, oh, that was it. Never batted an eye, and all he wanted to do was make a left turn to pull into Art's Bakery on the street. Disgusting. All the time we see this. Everywhere, I've had three yesterday when I was driving around town, people making the right-hand turn without stopping, even on stop sign. I don't understand where they're getting their training to drive. Something is wrong. I mean, coming out of an apartment building parking lot, I was driving north on Louis Street on the left-hand side, the building was, drove straight out of the parking lot into me. If I had been going any speed, there would have been an accident. I was kind of just going easy enough just to keep an eye out. But I really don't know what we're going to do. I mean, there is a complete, no concern at all for other people's rights or safety. And what if that lady had been hit and killed tonight when I was coming? Her family would be in deep mourning. And I'm saying, this is not right. If we had more feeling and concern for our neighbors, we would not be driving like maniacs. I mean, this man that came and almost hit the woman, within a few feet of where he made the turn, he turned in, made, went across, made a right parking spot just to go into a bakery. I mean, it's unbelievable that we are getting to the stage of that. And especially when we know what agony has caused to families that are left to grieve for these people. And we all experience that with our friends and relatives. So thank you very much. Appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Margaret. Theodore Polikronis, followed by Herbert Milano.
Mayor Draymond, members of the city council, good evening. I'm Theodore Polikronis, and I live on North Pacific Avenue at Cumberland. I'm here tonight to speak briefly about the proposed T-Mobile antenna, cellular antenna installation on Cumberland at Pacific. First, I wish to request a progress report on the status of the proposed ordinance for regulating such installations in our city. As you have been informed by the FCC letter from Dunn, a beta procured to us by Congressman Schiff, the city has a legal right to enforce, to enact and enforce zoning ordinance regulating the positioning of cellular transmission equipment. Second, I want to ask if the T-Mobile permit to construct at the Cumberland and Pacific site has been revoked or withdrawn, and if not, why not? We want this permit revoked and not be reconsidered until the new ordinance is in effect. Third, I wish to inform you that someone has been stealing from our yards the signs which we have placed protesting and objecting to the proposed antenna installation in our neighborhood. This is an outrage. I have notified the Glendale Police Department about it, but of course, I really don't know what will happen from this. Fourth, some agent from T-Mobile will be meeting. He notified us through the, kind of a strange document through our mail slot, no more than twenty-five citizens, he says, on the matter on Thursday, February five, at seven PM at the Days Inn on Pioneer off Pacific. Representatives of the city council may wish to attend this one. Lastly, I really don't like to come here.
Sometimes we don't either, Mr. Polikronis.
Yeah, but you volunteered. This one came upon me.
That's true.
So please do something and make T-Mobile and all the rest of the cellular phone companies place their antennas and equipment away from our residential neighborhoods. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Polikronis. Let's see if we can get you some answers too. But let's hear from Mr. Milano, who's our last speaker, and then we'll see what we can find out.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. This afternoon during the Housing Authority, I presented to you a picture of my apartment building with children playing there. The apartment building happens to be in recreational area ten, which has about seven hundred and fifty square feet of parkland per one thousand residents. It is the area of Glendale in the most dire need. The children in the neighborhood do not have a place, a parkland where they can play basketball or any other sports within ten blocks of their residence. We cannot expect children eight, nine, ten years old to be able to walk, you know, half a mile, a mile away in order to be able to find a place to park. I presented to you a concept that I had with regard to a way to accomplish this during a budgetary constraint. And my suggestion was that the city perhaps can help defray the cost of a YMCA membership to these children. So I went directly from here upon recommendations by Housing and decided to check with them to see what the cost would be. It's basically ten dollars per child per month. So they can actually get a chance to play basketball and so forth. They have capacity for at least one hundred children. So I decided to pay, you know, for ten of these children for one month, and Mr. Ryan Nakoda, the director of Well... Nakota, the director of wellness, decided that we're going to accommodate me, and I'll do it for two months. So now we have a recreational facility available to the children that play surrounding my building for two months, so they can actually have a place to play basketball, and have a place where they can go swimming and have supervision. I would imagine that within recreational planning area 10, there could be dozens, if not hundreds, of other children who don't have access to parkland. So I have a couple of suggestions. For those individuals who are running for office, then $100 will take care of 10 kids for another month. So I figure we got a few candidates. Maybe if you submit the checks to the YMCA, to the attention of the 307 Kenwood Building, I think that would be a long way towards helping this out. Ideally, though, I would like for the city to find a semi-permanent resource of funds, so that the children who have been denied parkland for years and years and years have a place where they can play. I would suggest also the YWCA, which is about now five blocks away. I also wondered how some of the candidates for office this year are going to answer the questions of the League of Conservation Voters or the Sierra Club. Some of the questions that you are presented, like with you, Mr. Quintero, are the same questions that were probably presented four years ago. And the questions are, "What have you done in order to promote parkland in the densest part of the city?" It's one of the questions. Because I know, from this experience coming here frequently, that the biggest opportunity for green space and parkland, which was the three and a half acres surrounding Central Park, was virtually ignored by placing the Dole Recreation Center right smack on the park, by placing parking spaces on the park, by placing a driveway right on the park. And all of these driving forces concerning density increases, the parkland that is needed for that density, it's right there and it's already city-owned. And yet, when we have had the opportunity, we've had to actually struggle to get it. This is an area that has been neglected for a very long time. Many of the projects for parkland in South Glendale started 12 years ago. You know, the Adams Hill Park started 12 years ago to get, you know, half an acre parkland. And so the contrast that I make between the city salaries and the pay that we give the directors, and the pensions, and the luxurious pensions we give, eventually drain the city's resources, and we don't have the monies that are necessary to create the environment and the quality of life of the residents where it is most needed. I ask you, and I beg of you, to salvage the last three and a half acres of open green space, just as you stated four years ago during the Homeowners Coordinating Council Forum, where I saw all the answers say yes, that we will support this kind of parkland in Central Glendale. And your actions did not follow that. At some point in time, someone has to hold you accountable to that. You cannot simply go to a forum and state all kinds of promises, make all kinds of assurances, and then get elected, and then remake on your promises, and then expect us to be quiet. I'm not going to stay quiet about it, because it came from your words and your assurances that you will preserve that open land. I would like to see a copy of the vision that you gave to the Sierra Club and to the League of Conservation Voters, so that we have it on record, to see if what you tell them is what you do if you're elected.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Milano. That was our last speaker. I will close oral communications at this time. Let me go to council comments on the issue, on the oral communications, and then we'll come back and perhaps put Mr. Elliott on the spot and see what our, Mr. Elliott of Price Waterhouse, and we'll see where we are with the other item, the prioritizing item. All right. Comments, Mr. Weaver.
No comments.
Mr. Quintero.
Mr. Najarian.
No.
Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple items, I'll deal with the issue of speeding that was brought up. I think the issue of the radar that has happened in Germany, it's not just Germany, I think some other states are doing it. That's what Carol Lou was talking about, possibly to give us a waiver on a temporary basis on certain locations. The state law is what forbid us from using those equipment. It's not that we don't want to, we just can't because of the state law. Also, the fact that you talked about, why do we increase the speeds? I think every time this item comes in front of us, all five of us kind of scratch our heads, and we go, "It's the wrong thing to do." But if I'm not mistaken, it's also the state law that goes 85% of the average, you have to do it. It's the law. And the state made those laws. And so that's why I think that day, we have this agendized, well, the senator being here, maybe somebody can call our assemblyman, maybe people can come and tell the state that, "Listen, this is contrary to what we want, and you're basically creating major hazard with some of your laws. You didn't think about it long and hard." So that deals with that. Ma'am, speaking? Karol Mikvarkem, Karakarch. Karol Mikvarkem, aye. If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask a question in Armenian, she does not speak Armenian.
I don't mind at all. You may want to also, though...
The issue that she was talking about is the fact that, if you remember, she came before us with a heater, and the heater, she says, has not been replaced. And so I would like to ask her a question, because my understanding is from staff, that there was an inspector from the gas company tried to go in, and she would not allow them. So I want to ask that question. Why didn't you not allow the gas company person into your house to concede the problem? And we can't fix things if they can't get access.
What did she say?
She basically, I asked a question, whether the gas company came in, she allowed them in or not. Number one issue was that, first of all, the first time they came, she was not home, so they did not go in. The second time they came, she basically told them that there's no leak, they said there's a gas leak. So they went inside, they looked at the heater, there is no gas leak, although the heater is non-functionable. It is not working. And she contends that even though the heater is not functioning, which in my opinion is one of the state laws regulation that says you have to have heat, don't have to have air conditioning, but you have to have heat in your room. If it's not functioning and it's not working, the city did inspection, and they were supposed to check to make sure it's working. She claims that the heater's not working, and the city has closed the code enforcement rule. The other thing that she showed was the issue that we talked about last week, and had to do with the garages. She's claiming that one of the garages is being rented out to a person that constantly changes vehicles there, apparently doing some kind of a sale through the garage for vehicles. And the other one is basically being used to store, and it's being rented, so most of the tenants in that building are parking in the street. So those are the issues. Shashar, merci.
[speaking Armenian]
Thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Thank you, Ms. Mosefsevian.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing. I would like to also make an announcement, that for some of you who would like to get a preview of the candidates, there is a candidate forum, which is going to be on February 8. That's around the corner. It's this Sunday, I think, 8th Sunday?
Saturday, this Saturday.
It's on the 8th.
No, 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 8th is Sunday.
Okay, it's Sunday the 8th. At 4:30, it's going to be at the Central Library. It is put together by Unified Young Armenian Association. So I just want you to know, so if you want to get a little preview, before you go to Coordinating Councils, you will get a chance to look at us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yusefian. All right, Mr. Najarian.
I said I didn't have any comments, but since Mr. Yusefian brought it up, I just want to make sure people understand about this speed limit. We can set the speed limit at any speed that we want to on our city streets, except if we want to use laser or radar to enforce it, the speed limit has to be set at the 85th percentile. The idea is that 85% of the drivers can't be that wrong, and that that is the actual safe speed for the, for that particular roadway. So it's a trade-off. Do you want to lower the speed limit and hamper the police in their enforcement by having to pace them actually behind them and on the vehicle, or from the air with the stripes that you sometimes see on the freeway, or give them the advantage to use the radar and the laser guns that they have to do that? So just, it is a little, it's counterintuitive, but that's the way the vehicle code reads, so...
Well, and I think you just cleared it up, Mr. Najarian.
It's still confusing.
Okay. All right. Mr. Polikronis asked for an update, and made some comments that the permit should be revoked, et cetera. Can we, I mean, Mr. Garcia, if you'd like to respond now, it's fine, but also if we can get, I think they've left, so if we can contact them and...
Get that information to them. My understanding is Ms. Sanson has been speaking with a number of the neighbors there, so we can definitely get that information to them.
That is true, and I know that she's been in contact with Cal Fions and also with Mr. McMahon. But let's make sure that Mr. Polikronis is aware of that, and if we could, please contact him. Yes, sir.
Maybe he can, maybe he can talk about when this is coming back, because a lot of people are watching this.
Yes, I would like to know that also. Thank you, good point. When is that coming back? When is it scheduled?
Mr. Mayor, on February 17th, we're bringing back an item to extend a report to the council, which is required by the government code whenever we adopt a interim moratorium. And with that item would be any extension, any ability to extend it would occur at that council meeting on 17th. So it would be essentially an introduction of an ordinance if the council wants to do that, and then they would come back the next week for adoption to extend it.
All right. All right, thank you. The only other comment I want to make on this, before we go back to our, not on this item, but related to oral communications, is something that Mr. Milano raised earlier today, and raised again this evening with regard to memberships at the YMCA, YWCA. Your comments this afternoon caused a bit of discussion afterward from various people coming and going. Not necessarily council members, don't panic, wasn't a Brown Act violation, but it did inspire some discussion about it. And what would it take, Mr. City Manager, to try to facilitate some kind of organized discussion with the Y, with the Ys, YMCA, YWCA, to see what we might be able to work out? I'm not saying the city should necessarily pay for it, but perhaps property owners, landlords such as Mr. Milano and other interested parties, who wouldn't mind contribute. As I understand, it's not terribly expensive. And so it may be something that even though the city can't put on its books in terms of dollars and cents line item, maybe we can facilitate some help just through leadership. There's an idea.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we certainly can. The other item related to that we were mentioning this afternoon is if young people can make it down to the YWCA, or even further, the YMCA, they can also make it to Richard D. White School, which these kids, I think, were playing basketball. There are basketball courts, typical type of final elementary schools there. And we can also begin a discussion with the district. I don't know whether that campus is open or not. Most campuses are, frankly, even if they're closed, are fairly easy for kids to get into and play. But in that regard, we can also commence a conversation with the district about making sure that that campus is open and available for young kids in the area. It is a large campus, lots of facilities there, and if kids can find their way to the YW, they can find their way to Richard D. White.
Let's talk about both. But I think the city can, one thing I think we can still afford to do, and that's facilitate those discussions. So let's see if we can get in contact with Mr. Milano, and see what we can put together in the very, very, I'll add one more, very near future. Thank you. And that was my only other comment. Are there any other comments, council, before we go on to our tabulations? Okay. Mr. Kasakian, could you take us back to that item, 8A?
Certainly.
And let's just read it again, just to refresh everyone's...
The action items at 8A is the City Manager's Report Regarding Consideration of Federal Appropriation Requests for Fiscal Year 2010. And at A1 was a motion approving and authorizing staff to submit proposed projects for possible federal appropriations for fiscal year 2010. And we left off where we were trying to tabulate your various prioritizations.
All right. Now, gentlemen, please don't hold your heads. We went through a very complicated budget study session this afternoon. I'm sure that we can tabulate the priorities of five slightly adult council members, so...
I wouldn't be so sure of that.
Okay. Um... We need a drum roll?
We have, it's been tabulated and audited.
We were actually, we were actually okay until Mr. Yusefian decided not to cast a vote on seven of the items. That threw us through a bit of a loop, but I'll ask either Mr. McFaul or Mr. Elliott to give you the results.
We, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we did have a little dialogue about the best way to deal with the absent values, but what we, as Councilmember Yusefian said, just deferred to what the other council members wanted on those remaining items. What we did, in the absence of a specific value, we just averaged the four rankings that the other council members provided. That being the case, using that methodology, this would be the rank order. The ISIS microwave loop protection is number one. The B-line maintenance facility is number two. The at-grade highway rail crossing improvements is number three. The C&amp;G buses is number four. The crime intervention video project ranks number five. The heavy lift aircraft is number six. Glendale Regional Aquatics Center is number seven. The Glendale Regional Soccer Baseball Complex is number eight. The smart grid automated metering infrastructure would be number nine. Number 10 would go to the Verdugo Regional Training Facility, and number 11, the La Mesa J Regional Interpretive Center.
Are you sure? Okay. All right. And is that tally with your figures, Mr. Elliott?
And apparently, by using a different methodology, John Tukalian says he agrees with that rank order.
All right. Now, you guys didn't just make this up, did you? Okay.
It's actually what John wanted all along, so...
Do you need a motion now?
All right, I think we do need a, we do need a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second. Rating, that's...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay? No. Mr. Kasakian.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Drayman?
Yes, and if there is no other new business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn in memory of Ivan Bud Holmo.
Holmo. One sec.
We're adjourned. Thank you.